Need to rate for my cue. Maybe transition over. We're good to go. Okay, as we start this portion of the meeting, I want to give you a little background to the video that we're going to open up with. As you know, we are consistently trying to find new opportunities for our students to participate in the school careers that they have and the school function, school activities. Girls' flag football is a brand-new activity this year, and our girls' flag football team recently won the regional championship. And also now, because of that, we'll get to go to Canton, Ohio in June to participate in the national flag football tournament. Several weeks ago, I was able to spend some time with these young ladies, talking about their flag football experiences, being a brand-new activity here in the Ray Peck School District, through one of our video series called Through the Eyes. So let's roll that, please. What do you think about girls' flag football?
I think it's a new experience. It's something new to the school, so I'm excited to try it. I've done it once when I was younger, but it was only for a short time.
Yeah, and so what do you want to get out of this? What are you looking forward to?
I'm just looking, like, just for a new experience, to try something new out and see how I like it. So far, it's really good.
Tell me about why you chose to play flag football.
Um, it just seemed super fun, and it's nothing I've done before, so I wanted to try it out.
So far, what do you think?
Um, I like it. It's really fun.
Sport. What makes you want to play this thing?
Oh, this is my first year doing this. I've never did flag football before. It's fun so far. I think it's a better opportunity, a better opportunity for everybody here. None of us have did it before. So, it's our all of our first years. I think it'll be fun.
Um, I came down here because I wanted to try a new sport, and I thought it would be fun.
So far, is it?
Yes, it's super fun. I really enjoy it.
What's the best part about the sport?
The best part is probably playing with my friends and getting to, like, exercise and have fun at the same time.
Tell me about your favorite part about playing flag football.
Um, just kind of being with everybody. Like, I just love the energy. It's just so fun.
What made you want to come out for this sport?
Uh, just being with all the girls and playing, trying something new. It's just, I mean, it's a really cool opportunity to be with all my friends and play football.
What's the biggest thing you've learned so far?
Um, I've learned how to catch a ball. I wasn't really good at that before, but no, I can.
It's kind of important, isn't it?
Yeah, it's really fun.
Excellent. Okay, the very, very best thing about this sport so far?
Um, I like the flag polling, and then it's also cool because I've met girls that I hadn't met in other sports before.
What do you like best so far about this sport?
I think it's really fun to try it out because it's a new thing I've never done before. I really like learning about how to play it and be with the girls.
I saw you catch a pass through the middle and take off. That's nice work.
Yes.
What do you like best about this sport?
Um, I like breaking people's ankles.
Yeah, you sure did on that last one. You think you could break my ankles in an open field?
I think I can.
I think you probably could too. What do you like best about this sport?
Um, I feel like there's a lot of aggression, and even though it's not super deep contact, it's more of like a still contact sport.
Excellent. I watched you out there. You are a competitor. What do you like most about this sport?
Um, I can just do it. I can just do it. It's like, no holding back. Just go out there and you catch the ball and you run.
Were you looking forward to doing this this year, once we heard we were going to have a program?
Yes, I was extremely happy. I've never played before, so I was like, let's get out there on this one.
Thank you, board. Those are a lot of fun to get through the eyes of our kids, and they do different activities throughout the district, and can't be more proud of our girls this year for coming out, trying something new and forging a new path. So, thank you for watching that and starting our board meeting off with that. I'd like to transition over now to the Lead Center update and have Mr. Abe Lewis, our Lead Center Director, come and tell you about the Lead Center.
All right. Green button was on. I didn't have to turn it on. Pressure was off, so, well, glad to be here tonight. Thank you for having me. So, really just exciting look around, seeing that our building is here, and we have some of the kids involved in the Special Olympics that I'll talk about here in a minute. We're present in addition to seeing robotics kids, and we have those in our building, so it's a pretty cool opportunity. So, they are also, will start the robot if I go too long and try to escort me out safely. So, just talk a little bit. I think an important thing to highlight is the growth of the Lead Center. Started out, first year, had 77 students, and this year, as of about two weeks ago, when I put this together, we're about 231 students. And on the day, that changes from addition, subtractions, and just interest that goes in to all of our programs. In addition, we have some outside district partners that have come into play. We've extended opportunity to Cass County, all Cass County schools. We have homeschool students. We have private school students. This year, we had nine students from difference of Art, or from Archie Midway, Notre Dame to Scion and homeschool. Next year, we currently have 26 out-of-district students that have been accepted. Archie Midway Summit Christian, Portland Christian out of Belton, Pleasant Hill, and homeschool expansion as well. In fact, the Pleasant Hill student, he'll be in my building tomorrow, and I get to meet him for the first time, so we just hasn't had a chance to get across. So, that's been exciting to extend our branches. When I talk to, like, our business partners, and I say, is it only Ray Peck kids? And, well, yes, it started that way, but now they're liking, that they're getting to see that we're expanding our horizons and offering that to a lot of different students and opportunities to those school districts that don't have those chances and for those students. So, a big thing about our programs that we have in the trade world, we're working towards getting opportunities, so internships. We currently have 12 kids in our programs that seniors started internships. One of those young men started at West Houston Electric, our partners. He actually started with a company that he is going to graduate and work with in January. So, it's been huge for him to have that opportunity. All of our students in our trade programs get OSHA-10. In addition, the curriculum we follow is the NCCER, which is a nationally-recognized construction trade curriculum. We, all students will get Core, which is heavy in safety and in math and English, and then they will also get their trade specifics, so whether it's HVAC, carpentry, or electrical trades. In addition, we have dual-credit opportunities within our machining program. Those students got 24 hours this year that they have, and we will have one student this year graduate from Ray Peck a week early from MCC with his associate's degree from MCC, and then the next week, he'll graduate from MCC with his associate's degree in manufacturing. Next year, we will have 14 kids start that pathway, and we'll see how many of them make it. In addition, a big thing in our machining program, I believe, as of today, we had 21 students that'll be testing in the next week or two to get a National Institute of Metalworking Skills certificate. So, really expanded those programs and offering those IRC opportunities for our students. Within enterprise and design, MVAs are big, and we have a different way of getting those market value assets within our client-connected projects, internships, and dual-credit opportunity as well. Enterprise and design, we have four young ladies that have been on internships with different companies throughout that started in January, so that was a new venture there. Those have gone really well, from being involved in, like, the graphic design and media world to also being involved with some nonprofit organizations as well that we've partnered with. In our teacher academy, we have dual-credit opportunities. In addition, those students are spending countless hours in our classrooms, in our school district, making a difference with our younger children that they serve. So, our lead transition skills, so this would kind of be a program that really this year was its first year, is like a full-time program. Last year, we had five special needs students that came to our building on Fridays only, and this year, we currently house seven students that have been in our afternoon session all day, or all afternoon, all year long. Very inclusive opportunity for these students within our enterprise and design program. They have working hand-in-hand with our regular education students, being involved in projects to serving them through their Spill the Beans coffee shop that they run from start to finish, from managing to inventory to doing the accounting, and the Ms. Huff does a lot of supervision in there. Recent accomplishment that we have is that four students have passed their driver's permit. I like the backside story of that, is that the opportunities, I feel, of them being able to be a part of what we have there have kind of pushed and challenged parents to, like, see that we need to push and challenge ourselves to allow our kids to get their driver's permit or go do things, so they have the opportunity, when they graduate, to really see that they can make a difference in the real world when they leave our building. So, tremendous program. That picture there, that young man actually has spent a couple days at Brick House Coffee in Harrisonville, and I believe he will have the chance to maybe go work there when he graduates. And, so, awesome for him. Our carpentry program, brand-new this year, so we have 30 intro kids, which is a lot. So, our shop is busy. It's messy. It looks a little different from time to time. We've kind of learned that that was a lot to take in, but we've had a lot of accomplish. Out of that, we have eight graduates that I'm working with right now that have interviewed, that are looking to enter trade careers. We have four or five others that are looking to maybe go to college, construction management, or different opportunities. And then we will have, out of that 30, we have 16 seniors that will be in the second-year program of that. We built nine storage sets, and without any marking at all, we sold all of them, so that's nice. We brought a little bit of money back to offset the expense that is a carpentry program. So, kids have learned a lot. They have great opportunities. We have got some of the biggest partners in our local area. We're in our building last Friday, and we have some coming in tomorrow. I think Dana's going to interview with one of them next time because they were offered our students, one of the company's $26 an hour, starting out. So, one of the kids thought it was fake. We're telling, no, this is a real company. You are a talented person. They're going to pay you money. So, it's, this is the honest truth that our kids are still realizing is out there for them. Our machining program, so this would be probably our program that has the longest longevity of all them, for this is the fourth year of it. I was the teacher the first two years. We started with one student, Juan, who was in the robotics and heavily involved in that. So, now that we have 34 students that were enrolled in this program, 30 students are going to complete this first year that we're in, and then we have two students that were in our advanced program, and I highlighted that one of them will get his associate's degree. Graduate data, I thought this was, you know, we have a little scale to look at. Nine students that have graduated prior to this year have been, or including this year's students, will be entering engineering programs. A lot of mechanical engineering, manufacturing engineering, industrial engineering is what they're looking at. And Wichita State has done a great job of knowing and figuring out that we have this program, and they've recruited many of our graduates out of it. 20 are in a workforce, are going to be entering the workforce. All 32, or 32 of the 34 are interviewing tomorrow at MCC's campus for internships or job placement. So, a gentleman who graduated two years ago, I had in class. He texted me the other day. He is 20 years old, works for Lake City, works in a special machine shop, and he's working four 10s, and he's now got a raise to $34 an hour. So, 20-year-old, got the training through here. To be honest, without this program, I don't know if he graduates high school. So, really had a good connection with him when I was in class. So, we're seeing the current, but we also had the impact of two years ago that our kids are getting into. They told me don't hit the button too many times to move forward, so. Electrical studies, year two. This is probably our most popular program, and it's our most competitive program. I get a lot of emails from parents, why didn't they get into the electrical program? I'll just be honest with you, but it's, they want to be in it. We have high success in job placement, and our instructors done a great job of building opportunities that they want to be involved. We have eight seniors that will graduate. They have been involved in four different complete house projects, doing the rough end all the way to the finish fork in the house. Our current group of our intro to electrical students, they were involved in a very significant, high-needs, I don't should say, high-tech house involved, so it was very good to them to see some smart home applications that they were to be involved in, in addition to the regular residential rough end. We have 14 seniors next year, and we have, this is where we probably have our most trade company partnership. That number has changed because at about 5:30 today, I had a company call and said, we'll be there tomorrow to interview your kids at 8:00 a.m. So, they were, so it's growing. Mr. Ketchum has done a great job with it and continue to grow those partnerships, and it is very competitive, so it's been good. Teacher academy, last year was kind of our first year, and the teacher academy reboot of what we took from the high school and kind of went into this full force of grow your own. We have five of those graduates out of our program last year are currently sitting in college education programs. One thing that I think is really cool is, like, I don't know if it's a natural, what happened with the lead transition skills or not, but in our current group, we probably have three of our 20 that are in there right now that are wanting to become special education teachers. So, it's really cool to see that, and I like that. I think it's hard to really say the impact of what goes on in our teacher academy because I really don't see our kids. But I can say, as a dad, one of them is in one of my classes, or in my daughter's classes in first grade. I won't hide anything. She's an immature reader, for lack of a better term, and that girl, young lady that's in there has spent a lot of time with her, working one-on-one. So, I don't think we hear that story all the time because they're not in my building, but I think that's going on everywhere, and it's a huge impact that's a value-added to our younger students while we're trying to train up our older students that are doing a great job. Enterprise and design, it's probably, it's our biggest program. We have our most kids in it. There's no real cap on enrollment there. You know, we have entrepreneurial endeavors. We have a couple businesses that are growing within our building. You know, internships are huge, but this is kind of an all-encompassing place that I think a lot of students can be successful, from those who know exactly what they want to those who are just looking for career exploration. We have some of the best and brightest students that Ray Peck has to offer, and we have some of the kids that are looking for this opportunity or striving for a connection to school, and we are being able to serve them all in the encompassing program. But, you know, we've got a templates group that's trying to use our kitchen in the back and grow that, to Ian, we have an interior design group that I've kind of said, our building needs some, we got some money, let's see if we can make it look even fancier than what it is, and try to go there. We got podcast groups. To the Spark, which is our storefront area that I've spent a lot of time with that young lady, is she's trying to get that up and going to allow all students from all programs the opportunity to market what they have learning, both inside the Lead Center, maybe they do on their own volition, to our Lightworks Media Group that, we had four, four people that worked in that this year, and we will have seven or eight that work in that business next year. So, I know I went over five minutes. That's what I was told, but I tried to go fast and have lots more stories, but, so, I'll turn it over if there's any questions.
Well, I will say, I had our Board of Directors from Missouri School Boards Association in there for dinner Friday night, and they were in awe of what that building is doing. It just, you know, to see all of that encompassed under one roof is so unique, and you could have sold some planters if you'd had some for sale, and a dollhouse maybe, or a playhouse.
Yep.
You had a lot to say and to cover, and so we appreciate just, we appreciate all of the principles that have come before us because it gives us, gives a perspective of what is going on, and you've got the most diverse group, and I've been through there and toured there a few times. It's just fantastic. Through the Eyes, we talk about it's something new, it's something new, it's something new. I like to meet new people, and that's what your, the Lead Center is, a fantastic opportunity. So, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Onto the consent agenda is our motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto the robotics team.
Yes, I'm going to ask Dr. Volker to come to the podium as our robotics students move the robot into place. This is a group of students who have done outstanding work in putting Ray Peck on the map, and was recently got back from a national competition where they qualified to, well, I'll let them explain it to you, but that robot does some pretty cool stuff, and all built and fabricated by our kids in this program. Dr. Volker, tell them a little more about it.
Absolutely. Well, tonight, we have a special treat for you. Instead of just providing verbal congratulations to our robotics team, we've invited the team to come to the meeting with the 2024 robot. The Ray Peck Robotics Team Systems Meltdown competed last weekend, April 17th to the 20th, at the First Robotics Championship in Houston. Nearly 600 teams competed at this international event, and Ray Peck finished fifth out of 75 teams in its division. The Ray Peck team joined forces with a team from Israel, a team from Canada, and a team from China to form an alliance that competed through 15 matches, ultimately falling in round five to the second-place alliance. Ray Peck also won the Industrial Design Award for its robot. The award is sponsored by General Motors. Here's what the judges had to say about the Ray Peck robot. End-to-end, top-to-bottom, this team's robot was well-built and robust. They impressed the judges with their elegant manipulator, pristine wire containment, and aesthetic use of neon-orange parts, giving their robot a unique radioactive glow. They certainly won't be having any meltdowns in this competition. So, I'd like to invite one of the team members, Ezra Robertson, to the podium to tell more about the team and its experience.
Well, thank you for the introduction. We don't have a fun slideshow for you guys, but we do have a pretty cool robot with five awards telling us that it is pretty neat. So, we're going to do a demo for you guys, a short demo here with one of our drivers, so if you guys want to go ahead and enable it. This year, this is our competitive robot, Canary. First Robotics gives us a challenge every year. So, this is our competition season goes from January to, we just ended last Saturday at the World Championships. So, it's a pretty long season, but when you're talking about robots that are this big, it is never enough time. So, this year, the challenge, the game was called Crescendo, and the challenge was to take these game pieces, called notes, and place them in an option of three different areas. And so, what they're going to show you tonight, if it ever starts running, is how it can, how it can shoot, and how it can place notes in different sections, and we'll tell you guys a little bit about some of the different mechanisms. So, while we're waiting, I can tell you guys a little bit about, our actual design and build period is six weeks long. That's all we get. And so, for a team of students to come together and take all of the different, take all these different, form all these different sub-teams and come together to create a robot like this is pretty extraordinary. We go from digital designs, well, first, we go from just ideas, whiteboards. Then we go to digital designs in Fusion 360 that we then take onto our different machines and eventually get a robot like this built up and programmed, and it's some really great opportunities for us, for us students to learn new skills that we are going to use for the rest of our lives, and especially how interested colleges are in it. So, if you guys want to do demonstration here, so if you show the drive off just a little bit, so this is called a swerve drive. Omni-directional, you can see the robot can spin and drive in any direction. We don't want to drive too hard because we would not like to rip up your guys' carpet. I don't think you would either. And if they show you guys a little bit, you guys want to go ahead and use the end effector. So, you're going to see, that's our shooter mechanism tossing into our end effector to do what we call coin slotting, the amp and trap field elements on the crescendo field. And so, well, if it worked properly. It did get rattled on a 12-hour drive to and back from Houston, so sorry if it's not working properly. But, that, you can see our end effector there. Lots of designing and lots of work went into that, and we actually did see a lot of other teams inspired by our work, which we publicly share to teams around the world, as you heard. And so, if you guys want to go ahead and show them the intake, we're able to, under our bumpers, intake game pieces that we can then do what we need to. So, there you see the shooter. So, that can shoot into multiple different places on the field, and so, we can pass to other teams, or we can shoot into what's called the speaker, which is about eight feet in the air, and so that's a little bit of challenge, but being able to shoot from lots of different places is pretty cool. So, it's a program that offers a lot of different opportunities to us, to us students, and it's pretty amazing to see what we're, the problems we're able to solve with some, with some good ingenuity. So, there you guys can also see the arms. That's the best part of the demonstration here. So, you can see the arms with the fun colors and LEDs on them. These would actually help this 150-pound robot climb into the air and hold itself there to score more points. A fun fact about our climb is, our alliance at World of World Championships actually holds the world record for the highest end-game score, which is in part due to our climb and the human player who's able to toss notes onto what are called the microphones. So, it's pretty amazing to say that we get a whole world record, and hopefully next year, we get to move on to a better chance at maybe even winning the World Championships. So, thank you guys for your time. Do you have any questions for me about the robot? I guess that means I did my job, so thank you.
Ezra, I have, I have one question.
Okay.
What's the greatest learning that you have as a team or as an individual this year in creating what you've created and through this competition?
You know, there's a lot of things that we could point out on this robot, things that were new, things that were creative, but the thing that I learned the most, and I think I see all of our first years come in and learn the most, is the teamwork. It's something that is largely overlooked in a lot of different things that you can do, and there's a lot of sports that you can do that have teamwork, that you're, you know, when you're out on a field, you're working with it. But, there's also a lot of areas where you're improving yourself by going out and practicing. This is, this is such a huge team sport in that this is an incredibly complex robot that weighs a lot and costs a lot. And so, when we're talking about this, it's, we have these huge teams, you know, we have a, we have a team that's a good size, but we also have so many sub-teams that make up this larger team. So, just being able to work together, you know, we have project managers now. It's not easy. We have lots of long meetings where we want to be building the robot, but we have to be able to get through the paperwork first. And so, that opportunity is, I think, the biggest learning experience for all of us because all of us have always been interested in this. You know, some of us started learning programming in middle school or designing things, and so it's just to get to work in that team environment to where you get to come up with even crazier things than you could ever do on your own is what the biggest, the biggest thing that amazes me, getting to do First Robotics, so.
Are you all high schoolers? Is this 912 on your team?
Yes, so all high schoolers, and we have our amazing mentors to help guide us that are industry professionals, so.
Who is your human shooter?
Our human player?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Elliot over here, this, he's one of our human players, and also Landon, standing right next to him. They could help feed some of the robots notes from outside the field and throw them. And so, Elliot actually had, I think, one of the highest percentages of making that microphone at our first competition in Arkansas, so a lot of people were scouting our human player there. If they had a draft, he might have been picked.
Thank you, guys. Very cool.
Well, we definitely want to recognize some folks from this. So, I want to start with the team coaches, so if they could stand and be recognized. We've got Dylan Fuer, Zach Kerfoot, and Dennis Squires. So, our mentors are Kevin Killingsworth, Marjorie Hines, Charlie Hanning, Jeff Campbell, Jaden Monckney, and Nolan Campbell. Okay, and our student team members, Tyson Whelan, Ezra Robertson, Hayden Hershey, Max Midgley, Aiden Casey, Jackson Peak, Chris Cobb, Landon Younger, Mailey Hanning, Morgan Miller, Zia Monckney, Riley Cogan, Elliot Kay, Isaac Barker, and Christopher Stanley. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, students and parents. I know your support of this program is awesome. I know many of you went down to Houston to support that as well, so thank you for all you've done. And our business mentors, they couldn't do this without you, so appreciate your efforts on that. So, guys, bring home the championship next year, all right? We'll have you again. Thanks, everybody.
Moving on to our library media program review.
Yes, as Dr. Hoffman comes to the front to talk about our library program media review, I'm really curious about how she's going to top that last.
He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute. You should have let him run. Yes, give him a couple of books. Run around while you're talking. He's just got a new backpack. Well, Brian told us. That's awesome. Happy birthday. That's so cool. I'm almost there. That's cute. He looks happy. He's been in a library mask. That's super cute.[744.87]
Like the Week Six units on Project Lead the Way, on social studies inquiries, and wanted to know what our teachers are feeling like as far as how that collaboration is going on those inquiry-based learning opportunities. And our teachers responded in their baseline with 97% of them said, yep, our librarians are doing a great job at that. So it was great. They felt really positive about that. They also thought, gosh, we're going to spend the next couple of years just kind of trying to figure out how to even go more deeply in that. So that's, that's great. So the new goals that the team is proposing would be twofold. So by the end of two years from now, the average copyright age of our fiction collection will maintain itself at 14 years. We talked a lot about maintaining versus do we want to change that? And it's, it's quite a feat to stay weeded, to stay relevant for students, and still maintain this. So they're really excited that they were able to get there this time. They want to work hard to maintain that age. They feel like more than that would be a bit unrealistic. It's a really solid average, and they want to, again, make sure that, especially now with the opening of the ninth grade center, they work hard across all levels to keep interests really relevant of what their titles are in there, but also keep the weeding going to make sure that they maintain that. The second goal, again, I had mentioned that you were going to see that back again. They would hope that 54% of our nonfiction titles in our library collection would have copyrights within the last 12 years. Again, that baseline was 47. They want to say that 7% increase we saw over two years, we're going to do that again. And, and hopefully that they feel very successful, they feel very hopeful that they're going to, to be able to meet that. So. And then, opportunities for improvement. As with any program, we have those. So to increase the partnership with our teachers to support the inquiry-based learning, CBL, PBL opportunities for students in our classrooms, in our libraries, in our schools in general. Again, you saw 97% of teachers responded K-12 that this is going well. They're not done. Our librarians have so many more things they feel like they can partner and provide support to together create that learning experience for our students. So they want to continue to dive into that, to collaborate with others, as I mentioned, but to provide specifically for the second opportunity, teacher professional learning on topics related to research, AI, and other things. There was a survey of our teachers this year, and they had some specific asks for things in that media, that technology, that, that realm, that they, our librarian team believes that, gosh, they are really in a good position with some of that knowledge to be able to support our teachers. So therefore, it creates those great experiences, those next steps to create those for our students. And then to continue that collaboration, K-12, they really want to make sure that our students have what they need at all levels, and that they themselves are communicating with one another about how to best do that so that we have a really comprehensive and strong K-12 program. All right, any questions?
So if you just look at the scorecard, we're doing great. How do we stretch our souls?
I think that nonfiction goal is one that they definitely think is going to stretch us. And I think continuing, and reflecting upon the team's discussion, they feel like while that initial survey result felt good, 97% of our teachers say, yes, you're great partners to us on this PBL, CBL journey. I think our librarians are very aware of how much more there is to still accomplish for our students' learning experiences in that realm. So they feel like that's definitely going to be a push goal for them, too. It's listed as an opportunity. They actually talked about, they think that there's going to be some things they want to survey. They're not quite sure what to say and ask, but they, they're going to spend some time over the next couple of years figuring out how to go more deeply and getting some feedback that's going to give them those next steps. Like, yeah, we're great partners, but how can we partner better or differently than that? One of those ways is that giving them the professional learning, or being partners in that professional learning, like we mentioned. We all know that some of that AI and whatnot is a new frontier. And so I think that in and of itself is going to be a big lift and a big support for our teachers that will push us as well.
I know. From, just from an elementary standpoint, our media specialists are multifaceted, multi-talented. They wear many hats. I was always astounded by the way they could, you could walk in and ask them any question, and they could help you with that answer. And watching them interact with the kids and have so many different options for learning in the library, it certainly isn't the library that I grew up with where you just go in and check out a book and read quietly in the corner, you know? It's so wonderful to watch, to watch them in action, so.
It is.
Kudos to all of our specialists, our media specialists.
There were so many pictures I could have added, but I mean, they had tons. It's just, it's really great what they do.
Great work by your team, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to the East Campus power outage.
Yes, as Dr. Pettingill comes to the podium. As, as you know, about three weeks ago, we had a power outage at East Middle School, which was the second one in a very short period of time that caused us to lose some instructional time. I think the celebration in, through all that was the fact that this district mobilized so quickly through its communications, transportation, et cetera, to get kids home and home safely. The bad news is, we had to do it to begin with. And so there was a lot of traffic, email traffic of questions you had, and I promised you a conversation that we could have with Dr. Pettingill at the next time we're together. So this is the next time we're together. Dr. Pettingill goes on to shed some light on, on what happened. You know, there's, there's a path that we could go down to make sure it doesn't ever occur again, but that's a very expensive path, and so I'd need to have the boards have that conversation. No decision tonight, but at least lay some information out in front of you so that you know what we're looking at. Thank you.
Very good. So after spending my first eight years at Raypack with not ever having to send kids home for an electrical issue, we ended up sending them home twice on our East Campus within a few months. Both were on, it happened on Fridays. One was at 2:00, so we sent them home around 40 minutes early, which was one thing. The other was when we lost, when we had to send kids home at 10:00 AM on a Friday. That one, the big one, was due to a sectionalizer. I know that it, there was a good, big green box out on the highway. It got too hot, and it caught on fire, and they told us it would be at least 24 hours before it would be turned back on. To get into more details on why that happened, I'd have to have Scott come up here and talk, but through conversations with Scott and Jorge and, and our team, it's not something that should ever have happened, and it shouldn't, it's a very rare event. So it's something I'm not overly concerned about happening in the future. Like Dr. Sligle mentioned, we found out some really cool things. Our staff, our teachers, our students, no, there was zero chaos, there was zero panic. Everyone was doing fine. The buses arrived quickly, took students home in an orderly manner, never felt we had any safety concerns. Maintenance, custodial, child nutrition, all had to jump into things. You don't think about the fact that we have all of those freezers and coolers out there that were filled with food, that they'll hold their temperature for most, for up to 24 hours, maybe even longer, but we didn't want to risk anything. So they transported everything to other schools, and then transported it back by 5:00 on Monday morning, and so that they could have everything going for the Monday school. One of the major reasons that we were forced to send kids home is because modern schools have some downside. East Middle School was built for efficiency. It has automatic flushing in its toilet facilities, which means they don't flush if there's no electricity. And that's a big deal when you've got a building of 900, 900 to 1,000 individuals that still need to use the restroom. So one of the things that we are, that Scott and Jeff Helsner are already investigating and have ordered parts, and Jeff's going to be doing the workforce this summer, is going to put manual flush valves in at East. So that will not be an issue for next year. So that's our, that's a pretty big move there. It does come with a cost, but one that's affordable. We also investigated the possibility of bringing in large generators where we could honestly be self-sufficient. We looked at bigger, longer-lasting, uninterrupted power supply, the big batteries in our techs. Because right now, we only get about 30 to 45 minutes worth of phones and internet when the power is off. So that's why we have to move quickly and get communication out. We could, we could invest quite a bit in the UPSs and stretch that to maybe an hour, but that would be a large investment for not a very big return on investment. If we were honestly looking at generators that could, we could be self-sustained out there between those two buildings, it would be close to a million dollars. It would be over $950,000 on what we could find directly off the internet on what those would look like. That would be the upfront cost before we did maintenance and upkeep and testing and making sure all of that was in a good place. So that's not something that, from my team, as we're recommending right now, working with the operations team, especially Ryan, if we were going to add a generator, he would prefer we do it actually at Creekmore where our second, where our internet comes into the district. So there are some other things that we would have to look at and dive into further there. But Dr. Sligle did ask for some prices, and even though they're kind of ugly prices, I did want to make sure that that's what the board's aware and sees exactly what is available. But I'm happy to answer, answer any questions.
Well, we weren't talking about bus issues, right? That's, that's a plus. You're not in front of us talking about bus issues. So I do want to, again, commend all of the staff out at East Middle School, and I don't, and I'm sure Ninth Grade Center as well, but it happened so back-to-back that we just needed to have this conversation. And so I appreciate that we did have, put everything mobilized, and so I, I do not believe that our district should spend a million dollars on something that, in theory, won't happen again. If it becomes more frequent, then we may have an EVERG issue, right?
Absolutely.
Where the, the, the issues were not ours, neither of them were caused by us.
Neither of these issues were our Raypack.
Yeah. So there's nothing that we need to do internally that we're, that is causing it. It is just what it is. So I appreciate the information and the, the change in the toilets.
Yeah, Deanna, to that point, while there was nothing directly that we caused or could fix, I think our ability to react to it will be vastly improved next year with the toilets. Go, you go back, Brian, to the earlier one, the one that happened at 2:00 in the afternoon. We made the decision at that, by 1:30, whenever it was, we made the decision to release early because, primarily because of a restroom issue. You know, if we take that out of the equation, those students who are there until the rest of the day would be dismissed at the regular time because we could have bottled waters and we could take care of that, it was after lunch. So we were very frustrated by that decision because that was a restroom-driven decision. The one at the earlier part of the day, we'd have to think about the internet traffic and that sort of thing, what we could do from a teaching and learning standpoint, but we are trying to develop an environment where, if it's three hours or less, that we should be able to have the discussion to ride it out. And that's what I want to get to, because right now, having a 1:30 issue and having to make a snap decision to get out by 2:00 was not acceptable. So I think kudos to Dr. Pettingill, Scott Dobson, for figuring out ways that we can stretch it out longer and working with EVERG to make sure that just doesn't happen again. I can't promise it won't, but I think we'll be better prepared next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to the Special Education Program Review Executive Summary Presentation.
Yes, as Dr. Barr comes to the podium, I do want to set the stage for, for the board. If you remember back in 2019 when we started our, our relationship together, we, the conversation was about continuous improvement. And we were going to take a program, maybe a two programs a year, and do a deep dive to make sure we are at the very leading edge of making sure it's a good for kids. And then we had a world event that happened that kind of held us at bay for a couple of years, but we're back to looking at each of our programs across the district. The first one out of the gate that we did was special education. And we have the executive summary tonight by Dr. Barr to shed some light on what the evaluation showed us and how we will be moving forward with this. So, Dr. Barr.
Yeah, thank you. So again, as you may recall, you approved a contract with the American Educational Consultants to conduct that special ed program review, and so I am going to provide a summary of that executive report. AEC, which is the company, conducted this review over a 14-week period that started in July and ended this month, in April of this year. And we specifically asked that company to look at the following: review the special education department, including curriculum, staffing, and services; compare Raypack against other school districts, analyzing caseloads and expectations of teaching and administrative staff. And those comparison districts were Belt and Blue Springs, Grain Valley, Independence, and Lee's Summit. We asked them to analyze the identification, evaluation, and eligibility process for special education; conduct interviews of stakeholders regarding positives and challenging aspects of the special education in the district; survey stakeholders regarding special education services and reports, or support, sorry; conduct observations of special education students in regular and in pull-out classrooms; and then develop short and long-term recommendations based on all of the findings. So the review did include a study of data over a three-year period. They were on-site for an entire week to observe classrooms, conduct interviews, and then also had some focus groups. And so they were able to make it to nine schools as well as district office, and their focus groups included teachers, staff, but also included a parent focus group as well. They also did an analysis of the surveys given to parents of students with disabilities, special education staff, and general education staff. They did a study of our curriculum assessment and intervention programs, a study of processes, procedures, and communication protocols, and a study of our professional development opportunities. So a pretty comprehensive look at, at our special education program. The goal of the study was to determine the degree to which we are providing high-quality instruction to students with disabilities. So the executive summary includes commendations and recommendations. The commendations, they definitely felt there was a strong sense of community, respect for colleagues, and a deep expression of care for students. They really did point out that sometimes they go in and do these reviews, and the adults are only talking about the adults, and that is not what they found in our district. They found that it was very much a concern for kids and doing what's best for kids. And so they found that very refreshing. They found that another commendation was a huge investment in devices so that all students had access. So we've had one-to-one for, for many, many years, and they say, even in this day, that's not something you see across the country, and so they commended us for that. The use of multiple tools to enable data-driven decisions, in particular in WEA. The fact that we do three times a year do the testing is also something that they often don't, don't see. The focus on the science of reading, even though we're only two years into that, they definitely wanted to make sure that we were recognized for, for doing that well and really being dedicated to that, and believes we'll see improvements because of that dedication. A strong desire among the staff for increased professional growth, so definitely a desire for our staff to continue to learn and grow. A solid increase in Medicaid reimbursements since 2021. We've had a 227% increase in acquiring those reimbursements. Minimal litigation resulting in fiscal responsibility of public funds, and then the school facilities that are in excellent condition. The recommendations, and I'm summarizing these as well, reducing the number of meetings that process coordinators have to attend so that they can support the staff in a more effective manner. Reorganizing the special education manual so information is easier to access. They recognize that the manual was there, but oftentimes people said that kind of clipping through the different folders because it's electronic made it a little confusing and asked us to streamline that. To consider having regular meetings between special education district administrators and special education staff to increase communication. Visits by the director and/or assistant director to each campus multiple times a year to observe classes and discuss special education matters. Review our identification process for speech-language impairment. Consider the utilization of the response to intervention method, or what we call the MTSS, multi-tiered system of support, to identify students in addition to the discrepancy method for special ed. Provide job-embedded, differentiated professional learning and collaborative planning time in the areas of co-teaching, instruction for students with disabilities, and differentiation for both regular ed and special ed staff. And additional training for our administrators and counselors and people who help make the master schedule so that we can have more effective scheduling in special ed, particularly with co-teaching, which I do think, on a side note, will be easier from what we're seeing with our new SIS system, that that should all be, be helpful in, in that. Clarify protocols for IEP teams to follow when determining program placement, particularly when it comes to our functional skills program and our compass program. Consider using the extraction of minutes of service from IEP, so the total number of minutes kids have in their IEPs to determine staffing needs instead of caseload, which is the method we've been using, to ensure that, and ensure that staff understands that process. Tighten up our transition meetings for students, especially when they're moving from fifth to sixth grade, or eighth to ninth, or early childhood to, to elementary. Review how costs are tracked, including transportation and out-of-district placements, just to assess cost-effectiveness. So it was just, just do a review to make sure that we're, we're at that best level of cost-effectiveness. And then consider organizing a parent advisory council to provide that ongoing feedback from our families. So we did receive a draft of that report earlier this week. It is still in draft, which is why we're only doing, doing the executive summary. That's what we have permission to share. That report is about 100 pages long, so it is much more thorough than what I am giving you today. And so we do have a lot of information to review. After the executive summary and the report, they give detailed information on organizational leadership, communication, identification, referral, assessment, and placement, program design and delivery, staffing, professional learning, student achievement, fiscal matters, personnel and operations, and parent involvement. That additional information provides many more details into the data collected, the reasoning behind the recommendations, and further guidance in moving forward in those recommendations. So it is a robust report that we can learn from. My next steps are to provide our new director, Dr. Amanda Coleman, with the report and meet with her discussing how we were going to move forward in regards to short and long-term goals. In the short term, AEC recommends increased visibility of our sped director, a reorganization of the special education handbook, and the development of a multi-year professional learning plan. So we are going to definitely take those in advisement and planning for our future. Dr. Coleman will be in the district at least two times in May, and we're going to visit as many schools as possible. We're going to start with our program schools, like Bridle Ridge for Compass and Eagle Glen for Functional Skills. And then we are also going to begin this work sooner rather than later. So we do appreciate the thoroughness of the process and the report, and we will approach this as an opportunity for improvement, and I am confident that we can successfully move forward. Again, some short-term goals, some longer, but I am confident that we, we can do this. Questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't think of this earlier, so I would have emailed you. When it's talking about what the districts that we were compared to, did it provide you like what we do well, what, you know, when, what's the comparison?
Yes, it would say in certain things, you know, we are, we are at the same level, we are, we are above, we are below, or, you know, with two districts and three districts. It also occasionally did comparisons to the state overall as well.
So what's our report card?
I'm sorry?
So what's the report card? Where do we stand in comparison to those?
It really varies.
It's just depending on...
It varies based on all of those, all of those pieces of, of information.
And is that included in the comprehensive one? Okay.
It is. There's lots of nice charts. They make it very easy to...
Perfect. I can't wait.
I would add, there's no discernible trend overall between the comparison districts. So I think we can learn some best practices from some, and they can learn some things from us.
Sure, that's what I was hoping, that...
That's how, that's what I gleaned, that's what I gleaned from that.
Yes, okay.
And somewhere in this I read, I'm assuming they're telling us whether the testing that we use is best practice or not?
They do give us information on our, our assessments. They do like our use of NWEA. They, they did, that was in one of the commendations.
I know so much is driven by the state in this, and we don't get a lot of say-so. So that's what I, I just want to make sure that we're using the best testing that we can for our students. And especially when it comes to the speech and, and, and those therapies as well.
They did want us to look at that. They did feel like our numbers were low in that area, and so that's why they specifically pulled that one out and said, you, we need to be really looking at that qualification. Speech language, uh-huh.
They did a number of areas of looking at some academic achievement, and there's some areas in there that we are going to have to dive into, because we're not going to sit idly by with this report and not do anything about it in some of the areas that are most pressing. So that's, I'm looking forward to having Dr. Coleman on board, setting the path. Board, I want you to, and I know many of our parents here as well, this is a, not an overnight fix, but it certainly gives us a roadmap to move forward. Some of the things we're going to do right away, and some of the things that take some more time. But at least we have some better data now, some better information now than we had last year at this time.
Yes, and I will be combining this information. I have also individually met with all, all the principals and had conversations with them, because the report itself is anonymous, and, you know, it's kind of a general brush, and so I'll be able to tell Dr. Coleman exactly building by building what are the, maybe the more specifics to some buildings and not in others.
And then we'll get that report next month?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so I want to, you know, paint that picture, too. The company's official report isn't done yet. They gave us the draft to review. We have made some edits because, you know, people's titles were, you know, in error, comma here, exclamation point there, those types of things. But the recommendations have been, have been, we have taken, and we have delivered to you tonight, that they are part of the, the executive summary. So once that, I have an exit interview tomorrow with AEC. Once the report becomes final, we will enter it into the board record in the May board meeting.
Any other questions?
I do want to say thank you for that, because I know that was a very big undertaking, but it's one of the other, it's one of the things that we need to do. And like you'd said, we, we had talked about and planned doing more and, and doing it, and we just picked here, so I think this is a, a very good step for us, and we've heard a lot from parents for some things that we just need to look at. And so I want to see us continue to do this and kind of get some feedback on what's the progress of it, as well as what's our next program.
And I was going to say, I'm assuming in like our June retreat, we could discuss what we would like to see perhaps be the next program review.
I certainly have some ideas, but we will talk about it in June as to what is the next deep dive. Do you want to, you know, there's certain things about the special ed process in general, like frequently asked questions, or helping parents and staff members and, you know, kids through that. We could do a better job of, of transmitting that information, and so we have a team working on that right now, independent of, of, of this report, was we can do a better job of, of trying to convey the information in the, in the decision-making process to, to everyone. So that's something that we will have ready to go by, by next August.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to our Teacher Appreciation Week.
Looking at Pamela, this is May 6th through 10th. She is the, the architect of, of getting the, everything together, but we're going to be having a variety of activities for Teacher Appreciation Week, one of which is breakfast at each of our campuses. Sign-up sheets will be coming out. They've been out, so make sure you have filled in a name and time for your availability. Thank you.
All right, on to action items, the Performing Arts Center furniture. Dr. Pettingill.
Just quickly, I'd like to say congratulations and welcome to Janet Jones. Board of Education service is difficult but rewarding, and appreciate your willingness to serve, so thank you. April Board of Education meeting is always an exciting one. After months of planning, budgeting, soliciting bids, making selections of vendors to assist us in getting needed equipment, completing renovations and upgrades, and so now, months, in some cases, years of planning, come down to recommendations. So it's a big month for board. It's always interesting that new board members are here for some of these big-ticket items that we've been discussing for years. So excited to have recommendations for you tonight. All recommended spending tonight is part of previously discussed budgeting, so we don't have any brand-new stuff for you. You'll be also hearing from Scott and Ryan Gooding quite a bit tonight, as they've put in the countless hours and got in the weeds to do the research to make sure that we have the best recommendations for you. A reminder, the LEED Center opened in 2022, the Ninth Grade Center opened in 2023, and we are close to opening the Performing Arts Center, meeting all of the promises of the big ones for Prop S. For the furniture fixtures and equipment, or otherwise known as FFNE package, the district worked with Scott Rice, who we also worked with for the FFNE packages at the LEED Center and at the Ninth Grade Center. But we also worked with Scott Rice again for the procurement and installation of furniture for the lobby, green room, band and drum, band and drama offices, along with the production booth, and also storage for our band and orchestra instruments, which add up quickly, as you can imagine. The FFNE package was included in our budget for the Performing Arts Center, and we did hit with the amount that was earmarked for that. So administration recommends to the Board of Education to approve a package to be purchased through two different co-ops and seven different vendors at a cost of $101,021.63. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of furniture and storage equipment for the Performing Arts Center in the amount of $101,021.63.
Can I have a question? You want me to make the motion and then...
That'd be fine, then we'll go to discussion.
Okay, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Where are we in the budget? What's left?
Out of all of Prop S, when you take in all of the revenue and all of the expenses, I'm around $72,000 in the black, with the possibility of, we are still looking at up to, potentially up to a quarter million dollars in coming back from that guaranteed maximum price that we were promised. I know Scott's staring at me right now.
Yes, he is, actually.
He doesn't want me to say that number publicly, but that is a potential number, but we are in the black, and we are going to be able to meet all of the promises made.
Amazing. That's amazing. You guys, this work for everybody is just fantastic. That was a lot, and so, great job. That's it, that's all.
All right, and more discussion? All in favor? Most just passionately unanimously, thank you. On to the Application Control Solution. Mr. Gooding.
All right, good evening. Thanks for letting me come in and talk with you tonight. As cyber attacks on educational institutions continue to arise, it's imperative to continue to fortify our... it's imperative to continue to fortify our cybersecurity posture to protect sensitive data and uphold the integrity of our digital learning environment. Threat Locker's proposed system offers proactive security measures, empowering our district to identify and mitigate vulnerabilities before they're exploited by malicious actors. So after we've considered the bids and looked at the software, we've chosen Threat Locker as the winning bidder for our application control management solution. And tonight, we recommend awarding a three-year contract to Threat Locker for $43,514.20 annually, starting July 1st.
What...
To answer any questions.
Sorry, I waited. I should wait.
Nope.
Okay. It's kind of like lots of people jump into, you know, providing solutions. So what's their track record? Where are we at with who else they have? Do the other, do other schools?
So they are heavy into the banking industry. They're heavy into, I, I start with people that are really, really, not that schools aren't interested in the security, that's not what I'm saying, but that people that security is their business. So banking, credit card industry, things like that. And essentially, what we're looking for is an application that allows us to control every piece of software that's installed on any computer in the district. So this software allows us to say yea or nay if we want to. It allows us to say yes to these four computers. It allows us to say yes to this computer, and we're going to ring-fence that, and you can only deal with these specific parts of the computer system. You can only see these parts of the network. So it gives us control over applications that we've never, never had before. And that's, that's really what I was looking for.
And the staff training for your team?
Great. So staff training for my attempt, I thought you were going to ask staff training for the district.
That's the next one, but okay.
The great thing is our staff doesn't need any training with it because they don't even really know it's happening until they try to install something or something that doesn't work. Training for my staff, I have two people that are managing that along with, you know, several, several other systems, yeah.
Okay.
And their, and their support has been fantastic as well, so.
Turn on your mic.
Yeah, so Carol just asked if that's in addition to something that we already have. So we do have other measures that are in place. They don't do specifically what this does, but we do have systems in place where we have people monitoring every computer in our district to see exactly what's going on. And if, if something doesn't feel right, smell right, taste right to them, they have the ability to shut that computer down and remediate that situation, so. Unfortunately, no, that would have been great timing for me, but that's not what happened to you tonight, so no.
Is this price locked in for the three years then?
Yes.
Do we currently have anything for cybersecurity?
Yes, so we contract with a company called, geez, CrowdStrike. And so CrowdStrike right now monitors all of our computers. And the great thing we like about CrowdStrike is the budget that we have for our employees. We're not able to have 24/7 monitoring of humans at the district. That gives us the ability to have an outside company that that's all they're focused on. That's all they do, and they're monitoring 24/7. Because typically, like I said when I came, I don't ever like to come up here and talk about this stuff because people are listening. But attacks usually don't happen, you know, on a Tuesday at 1:00 when my staff is there. It's usually, you know, Christmas Eve when they know nobody's, nobody's, or they think nobody's watching, so.
Do we get notice of, are there a lot of attempts?
So, you know, like, any attempt for me feels like a lot of attempts because I think about it all the time. But I would, I would say that whenever we bring outside people in to look at our network, they're very impressed for an educational institution, how secure it is and, and the, the things that the people on my staff have done to segment traffic and make sure that people can't get to key data easily, so.
And then just a comment thanking you for thinking about this. It's way easier to sign a contract ahead of time than to pay to get your data unlocked in an ransom attack. So just kudos to, to you for bringing this to us, for keeping the data safe.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal for a three-year contract with Threat Locker for an application control management solution in the amount of $43,514.20 annually.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now on to wireless access points.
Okay, and I'm going to, I'm going to read something because this is, starts with kind of the E-Rate conversation, and I know some of you guys have been up here and heard this several times, but I'd just like to review it for anybody that maybe doesn't remember or doesn't know exactly what E-Rate is. So E-Rate is a program that provides discounts to assist schools and libraries in the United States to obtain affordable internet access with a focus on delivering internet to the classroom. Discounts for support depend on level of poverty and, or, excuse me, the level of poverty and the demographic status of the population served, and the range from 20% to 90% of the cost of eligible services. The Raymore Peculiar School District estimates to receive a 50% reimbursement of funds for these purchases. So that's a federal program. E-Rate's a federal program, basically trying to help schools kind of the heavy lift of networking equipment that I'm going to shoot some numbers at you at tonight, which are, for me, really big numbers. So we really appreciate the, the E-Rate program. It's been really good for the district. So the district used the E-Rate process to acquire bids to upgrade our network infrastructure with 750 Aruba access points. The new Aruba access points offer significantly improved performance, supporting a larger number of concurrent users and enabling bandwidth-intensive applications. Yellow Dog, who's a vendor that we've worked with several times throughout my history here, who has been excellent to work with and who I trust, has been selected to install the access points and to help us with the five-year subscription to the services that you need to control those access points. So this investment ensures a reliable, high-performing network and access for our students and staff. And tonight, I recommend that the board approves the purchase and installation of 750 Aruba APs from Yellow Dog at a cost of $562,597.50. Be happy to answer any questions.
How old are the access points we currently have?
Five years.
Is that normal?
They're probably a little long in the tooth, but they, they are still, they still work. Yep.
So that, that, if I'm looking at it right, the 562,000, 100,000 is for a five-year license? So that's a total cost for the five years?
Total cost for the five years.
And then do we get grant reimbursement or federal reimbursement?
So 562, that's the total number. And so E-Rate would get, basically, we're paying half of that. Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal for 750 Aruba access points installation and a five-year subscription from Yellow Dog, not to exceed $562,597.50.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Switches for E-Rate.
Okay, again, yes, this is another one of those E-Rate purchases, and really, we're looking to replace current switches that we have out in the district that are going end-of-life with new switches. And these are basically the, kind of the heartbeat of the building. This is how we transfer data from one part of the, one part of the school district to another. Not really a question of whether you have them or not. You have to have them to have, to have a network. So we need to replace 64 of those over the summer. Extremely lucky that I have a staff member on site that's able to do that work in-house. So all we're paying for actually are the switches, and Jason Smith actually is able to do that installation. So we're very lucky to have a CCNA on our staff to get that done. We are a Cisco shop, so these align with everything we're already doing, and it's going to work with our current, current hardware in the district. So tonight, we recommend the purchase of 64 Cisco switches from Converge One, not to exceed $235,318.40, which again is the, the total number, and we would expect a reimbursement of 50% of that.
How long do these last?
About five years. The great thing, though, is that E-Rate is five years. So every five years, it flips back over and you get your E-Rate pool of money fills back up, so.
All right, is there a motion to approve the proposal for 64 Cisco switches from Converge One in the amount not to exceed $235,318.40?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. WAN services E-Rate.
All right, so this is one I'm actually, I'm excited about all of it. I'm, I'm really excited about, about this one. So the Raymore Peculiar School District is proposing a significant project to enhance our network infrastructure by issuing a request for proposal for the lease and build of a fiber optic network in the district. This project aims to replace existing WAN services and ensure high resilience and robust connectivity to 10 district locations. Vendors were evaluated based on various criteria, including bandwidth options, uptime guarantees, security provisions, and technical support. So after we considered all of those, we went with Vero Networks. And if you look through the pricing there and the pricing structures that you're looking at, I want to explain a little bit to you on where we fell with the numbers and why I chose Vero and why I'm bringing that to you tonight. So if you look at the, like, second column, you're looking at special construction, if you see that, that part of the bid on there, Vero is bringing an option for us with a $0 down special, special construction cost, which is very nice for the district because I don't have $2 million or $1 million in my budget to, to make that happen. But the special thing that we're getting with Vero is that the entire network will now be buried, where 80% of our network now is up on poles. The other thing that we're going to be getting out of this is this is going to give us some resiliency. You can't say redundancy with E-Rate because they don't pay for redundancy, but they will pay for resiliency, which means that we're basically going to be creating a ring around the district with this network, if we're able to do that. These are the buildings to the north. So if a line is cut next to Raymore Elementary, we would still be able to get internet to them going the other direction. So it will really, should, will really limit downtime that we've seen in the past because of backhoes or weed eaters or squirrels or all kinds of things that have caused our network to go down. I do want to point out to you guys the Unite because Unite is our current provider. And they were the current, they were the provider of our network to the, to the south that lost the last bid as well. Unite's options there, the first status quo option, that is the network that we have now, not changing anything, just moving forward with it. That network is like 20 years old. There's places over in Silver Lake where you can, I mean, almost touch where those wires are at this point. So I'm excited to move away from that. And option two was to keep the current network that we had, but add that resiliency piece. So I just wanted to, I know that, those numbers sometimes look, or need explanation. I want to make sure I gave that to you guys. So happy to answer any other questions.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal for a 10-year contract to Vero Networks for WAN services in the amount not to exceed $25,500 per month.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to copier.
All right, so after conducting a thorough evaluation of proposals for leased digital copiers and services, we decided to remain with all copy. They were the low bid. We're already happy with what they do. The copiers that they sent to us in their bid are Canon copiers, which are better than any of the other copiers anybody else gave us. And I'll tell you, I talked with three of the other vendors on here who were, I would, I would say mad because they said there's no way they can bid Canon copiers for the price that they gave them to you at. So I didn't ask questions to all copy. I just said, "Thank you very much." And the thing that I'm most excited about this is we have doubled the amount of color copies that we're going to allow our teachers to have. So we've gone from 500,000 color copies a year to a million. This includes 18 million black and white pages a year for our, for our teachers. I know Brian, Al, Mike don't like to hear that because that's a lot of paper that goes with 18 million copies, but that's, that's where this, it leaves us. We've never pushed the black and white. We have pushed the color. We addressed that with this. And we're going to do some things with all copy as well that I think that we're going to get the price down to be exactly what we pay right now. So it will be a no-cost increase at all, but we're going to have better service, better copiers, and more capacity. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
When you put that number, I know in elementary, they come home with a lot of paper, but look at 18 million pieces of paper.
Yeah. Can make a good fort with that. Lots of boxes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal for a four-year contract for digital copiers and services from all copy business solutions in an amount not to exceed $13,720.05 per month.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Are teachers assigned so many copies per year that they can use?
Great question.
They, they were at one time.
They are.
Not exceed...
I remember that time. Had to enforce that, so I remember that. That was not fun for anybody. And I have never been told by Mike that, I've never been told by Dr. Schlegel, sorry, I've never been told by Dr. Schlegel that I have to, I, I have to limit that at all. The only thing that we limit is we do give every high school student 200 copies a year so they can, they can make copies if they want to.
Would that help to limit? Would that help in cost in any way?
I think we, I think this is a smoking-good deal.
Okay.
So I don't know. I mean, if I lowered that number, that, the number that they gave us would be lower, but they're already so much lower than everybody else that, that came in. And I, I personally, as an administrator, if my teachers think they need to make copies, they need to make, I mean, they need to make copies. I trust, I trust what the teachers are doing. They're, they're doing the right thing for, for the kids, so.
Okay.
Carol, I will chime in here, though, because I think it's an important piece of stewardship. This is great that we're moving in this direction. We have 18 million copies, all great. But we do take a look at our paper budget every year. Tiffany and I take, as, make sure that as we budget, we take a look at usage. Paper budget is, I won't call it exorbitant, but it's, it's significant. And so just because we have 18 million copies, I'm not expecting us to use all 18 million copies.
We, we have never, we have never pushed that 18 million.
Thank you.
Number, yeah.
It just used to be really policed. Like you were either restricted on numbers of copies or you were given reams of paper, and once that was out, you were done.
I, I, I remember.
You had to go buy your own.
We did that with toilet paper, too, I think, so.
Well, on that note, any other discussion?
We're dating ourselves, Ryan.
I know, it's terrible.
All right, all in favor of the motion? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Gooding. I'm, yeah, that's the right name. I thought I called him someone else. All right, on to Heavy Equipment Operators Program Low Voltage Package.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Ryan, for putting the copy paper on the tee for me there.
18 million. You can't go worse. Like, you can only go down from here, from 18 million.
It's about how many pieces of paper we order a year. It'll be perfect. You'll see that next month, though. All right, on track. So again, as you've heard quite a bit about over the last several months, has been the Lead Center Expansion Program, one of which, the very large program, is the Heavy Equipment Operators Program going out at the East Campus. The next part of scopes to get that package up and running will be the low voltage. This will be to take low internet out to the building, to have Wi-Fi for the students on their Chromebooks and their tablets, I believe, to help pull up instruction manuals and class learning that will take place outside, along with some safety, security things that we'll need to go ahead and bring cameras out to that site for security purposes of the equipment and just for student safety. Going with Smart Pro Technologies, utilizing the TIPS Cooperative, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and ninety cents. Happy to answer any questions on that.
It's amazing how quickly we can get a program up and going.
It will be, it will be very, very cool.
All right, is there a motion to approve the proposal from Smart Pro Technologies, utilizing the TIPS Cooperative for the installation of six IP cameras, switches, and access points in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and ninety cents?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. On to heavy equipment operators program, concrete work.
Yes, one of the final scopes that the board will be hearing about is the pad and the footings now for the structure. We finished up all the engineering from the Worldwide Steel, from the building that we approved last month. So, once we're able to get all their engineering, and have our engineers go ahead and look at those live loads and dead loads of that structure, we're able to go ahead and establish our footing requirements, and then our slab requirements. Utilizing our unit pricing that we put out to bid in February, February, I believe, January, February, the unit pricing, we have established our low bidder, and we are moving forward, I'd like to move forward with Barclay Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of seventy-five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars, and that'll be for the building slab and footings, and some parking pads in front of the walk doors, and overhead doors, and for, pad for the fuel tank.
Have we used them before?
We have, they performed a lot of our work the last several years.
Okay.
Does this include a warranty for labor and materials?
It would, yeah, we just do it one year.
All right, is there a motion to approve the proposal for footings and concrete slab for the Heavy Equipment Operators Program Steel Building from Barclay Asphalt in the amount of seventy-five thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. On to pavement preservation package.
All right, as part of our ongoing, continue, as we continue to try to keep our parking lots and our sidewalks in the best shape around the school district, this year, we have a, set a little higher budget of two-hundred thousand, kind of going through and evaluating every facility across the district, meeting with principals and building staff. We have elected to select Barclay Asphalt, again, off the unit cost, and have kind of dwindled down our list of needs to the absolute most and the highest, and have, gonna move forward with that, doing some crack seal, some seal coat, several parking lots, a lot of sidewalk repair, sidewalk replacement, curb repairing replacement, along with some restriping and seal coats of some of the parking lots across the district that are newer in the district, trying to maintain those as best as possible. So, happy to answer any questions. There is a lot of work going across the districts at a lot of different sites. It will be a little complicated, we'll do most, all this work in July, once summer school's out.
Is this part of just the normal maintenance, not part of process?
No, this is not, this is just normal capital funds.
Do we have any big projects coming up?
In regards to?
Pavement work.
We don't at this time.
All right, is there a motion to approve the bid for district-wide concrete and asphalt work from Barclay Asphalt, Inc. in the amount of two-hundred-and-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. On to Raymore dishwasher approval, and it's not me.
All right, probably one of the, the most entertaining projects that we'll be doing this summer, and probably one of the largest and most needed projects, will be the replacement of the forty-three-year-old dishwasher
Wow.
at Raymore Elementary. It is original to the structure, we have triple-verified that. It also is, I think without a doubt, we have proven the oldest piece of kitchen equipment in the school district.
Museum quality.
It still does work one-hundred percent this year, to be clear.
It's not under warranty, though, right?
Yeah.
It's not under warranty, and parts haven't been fabricated for, for about a decade, but
Wow.
there are some custom shops in Pennsylvania that do make parts for it. So, with that, working with Ms. Caitlin, we have, went ahead and solicited bids for the replacement of the dishwasher and the booster heater at Raymore Elementary. With the combination of both in-house labor and in-house work, and then outsourced labor and work, we would perform this project. The cost, we, utilizing the low bid of fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, or two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, would be our recommendation moving forward with Hockenburg. They have done quite a bit of work for us in the school district in the past, and they are utilizing a set of subs that are pretty familiar with the district as well. Happy to answer any questions on that.
And it, it says on here that we also, are you getting a grant from DESI?
Oh.
Fifteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much, yes. Ms. Caitlin did reach out to the state, and she actually has been awarded a fifteen-thousand-dollar grant through DESI for the improvements of some kitchen products.
Good job, Caitlin. All right, is there a motion to approve the bid for a dishwasher for Raymore Elementary from Trimark Hockenburg in the amount of fifty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
And what a job by your department and that building for maintaining that for all these years to keep it running, good job.
Madam President, before we move on, I, I want to thank the board, I know these first ten items were kind of lengthy, and also thick with dollar requests. Kind of all hit us all at once with getting prepared for the following year. Normally, I'll just say this for the people in the audience, normally it's not this thick when it comes to expenditures, but we're getting ready for the, the upcoming school year. And the support that you give us for the cybersecurity is huge, because none of us want to be on the other end when we need to figure out how to remediate a bad situation, so I, I thank you for your support.
All right, on to?
Well, I can't top that evidence of frugality with the forty-three-year-old dishwasher, but super excited about our heavy machinery operating program, I think it's gonna be a great thing for our kids. So, in a groundbreaking move, and yes, that was intentional, the Raymore Peculiar School District is excited to be entering into a memorandum of understanding with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 101. This historic partnership establishes the Operating Engineers Pathway Program at the Lead Center, offering students a unique pathway to require real-world skills in heavy machinery operation. This initiative, we believe, a first-of-a-kind in Missouri, promises numerous benefits to our students. The Operating Engineers Pathway Program immerses students in hands-on training to master the skill of operating various heavy machinery types. Beyond technical skills, students will complete the Occupational Safety and Healthy Administration, OSHA-10 certification, enhancing their safety awareness and employability. Critical to the success of the program is the collaboration between the school district and Local 101. The union's expertise and support have been instrumental in designing and implementing the program, ensuring its alignment with industry standards and best practices. The approval of this MOU marks a significant milestone for the school district and the community at large, reflecting an unwavering commitment to equipping students with the skills and knowledge necessary for success in today's workforce. The MOU has been reviewed by legal counsel by both parties. Tonight, we ask for approval of this MOU, so we can continue our work and implement the Operating Engineers Pathway Program. Happy to answer questions. Excited about moving forward this, as you've seen a lot of work from a lot of people to put this together for our kids.
So, just to bring it to down a notch a level, this is basically us agreeing to pay them for a teacher?
Yes, essentially, in a nutshell, there are other things involved. But the instructor and entered into that partnership, yes.
Okay.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Operating Engineers Local 101 Apprenticeship Fund as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I do have one.
Go ahead.
So, with that, it's their responsibility to provide us, a teach, an instructor goes through our, we, we vet them?
Lots of process, so they bring an individual to us. There are lots of things in the MOU, talking about certifications, requirements. We're actually meeting with an individual tomorrow to begin that process and go through HR and all the different steps that we have to do to make sure this is appropriate for the school setting and for our students. So, yes, that is a part of the process.
Okay, just, that's the one thing I wanted to.
Yeah, they still are employing that individual, so that individual is employed. We partner with them, and they become kind of a contracted employee of ours. We do have some special services situations where we've got staff that are contracted employees that are work. This will be similar to that, but they are required to follow our policies, get our backgrounds, do all those things to make them, because we really want them to be a part of our school community, so that is an important piece. I think we'll also remember, we should probably revise this, and we probably should, as the program grows, look to see if that evolves, and it becomes more a part of us in the hiring process, and what if we need two instructors? And so I think reviewing this MOU as we go will be necessary a part of program development and growth.
Thank you.
Before we vote, I want to recognize virtually everyone right there for taking an idea, literally an idea, that was hatched, brought to us, wherever you want to say it, about four months ago, five months ago?
Maybe a little.
Six months ago?
Yeah.
And getting mobilized to bring an opportunity to our kids, starting in August of twenty-four. That's incredible work. And what we're hearing from our trade partners, what we're hearing from those that are having a need in this area, that this is a game-changer for student opportunity in this field. And leave you understated, I'm gonna over, I'm not, I'm gonna set you, set it straight, this is the first of its kind in the state of Missouri. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr.
No, we believe that to be accurate.
And this is a big deal for our kids, for our community, and I think for the, for the profession, so
Yes.
thank you for your support, because I'm fairly certain you're gonna, you're gonna vote for this, this is a pretty exciting thing.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
On to summer school application.
So, part of the summer school process, and to be able to host a summer school, our local Boards of Education have to approve the district's formal summer school application. So, what you have in there, as included as your document, is the formal application that we will submit tomorrow, or after your approval, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, it's a little bit of confusing form, we apologize for that. It just asks you to set the general parameters of your summer school program, so like, you'll see the start and end date. Yes, the third of June is our start date, but the thirty-first technically is not the end, but because you have virtual students, and because you have different programs that go throughout July, they just have you use that larger timeframe. So, those aren't the exact dates that are, so our families are receiving information and signing up right now for our summer school program, but in order to host that and have that, we do have to improve, approve a formal application to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, you'll see, that's what this is presented for you right now. All, lots of estimates included and are allowed on this document. I don't know exactly how many students are gonna be at Peculiar Elementary. It doesn't close till May tenth, even the registration, so there's just estimates, but we have to provide this, and then they will submit back to us that our program's been approved. And then you'll revise and submit our true numbers as our summer school program ends. And that's kind of how the process works. So, this is, that's, just for, as a, some information for our summer school program, as you've seen in Friday updates before, very few changes are being made to the structure of our program that we instituted last year. I would like to commend our staff and our parent community, I really would. We're currently switching to a new Student Information System focus, and our parents have done a really nice job with that. So, you had to go on, you had to create your account, you had to link your students to that account. They've been very successful in doing that, we've already had fourteen hundred students sign up for summer school, a little bit over that, and, and really, the questions that they have coming in about the process have been good questions and on point, but not onerous or too many. I really think that that has gone well, and that's because we have a lot of people working behind the scenes to make sure that goes well, so I just want to publicly thank those folks. So, I would ask for approval of our formal summer school application.
Is there a motion to approve the summer school application as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. On to district-wide vehicle replacement.
Yes, Board, this is more of a housekeeping item, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention and for your approval, because back in February, you, you made a, you approved a trade-in purchase of five vehicles at a cost of one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars net. As we have gotten into this, we have decided to keep one of those vehicles, because we have a low-voltage maintenance technician that we'll be hiring. And so, the, taking that, one of the vehicles out of the trade equation has increased that cost to one-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. I would like a motion on that to make that, make that change, so that we can be, so no one goes to jail, right Tiffany? Yes. No, so that we can be solid with the numbers.
All right, is there a motion to approve the change in the district-wide vehicle replacement from one-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars to one-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. On to committee reports. I attended the Raypek United meeting the other night, afternoon, and it was eye-opening in a way. It was the large group meeting, and there were several young ladies there that have been a part of this. And it was interesting to hear their perspectives talk about belonging, and how all that they really wanted to do was to find a place for them that they felt like they were safe and belonged here. It was really interesting to hear their feedback in, in all of that. And their frustrations with some of it that have been along the way. So, it was interesting discussions to hear. They're working on it. You know, and really, that's what we strive for, all of our students, in any club, or extracurricular activity, or even esports. You know, just, just finding that niche where they, they thrive, you know? They see there's other people that are like them, and that have the same interests and passions, and, you know, even as adults, that's all we want. You know, so we would want that nonetheless for any of our students, so. All right, on to superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President, I, too, would like to welcome Janet to the board. Thank you, thank you for your service and the next three years together, this would be awesome, thank you for, for doing that. Talked a little bit earlier about the Heavy Equipment Operation Engineers Program that we are putting together. You will see in your board update this week that we are putting together a May thirteenth groundbreaking ceremony out at the campus, at four PM in the afternoon. We'll have many of our trade partners there, as well as maybe one or two pieces of equipment, so you can see what our kids will be learning, as well as some of the students who have expressed interest in the program. One of the students will be even speaking about the program itself, so I believe we have ten, I'm looking at our team right now, ten students who will be part of the inaugural class going through that program, and I'm looking forward to, you know, what that does for student opportunities across our district. Also, then want to point your attention to a handout at your place table. Dr. Barr gave a presentation to the Raymore Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday about real-world learning, and in doing so, put together a flyer that kind of outlines some of the ways we are currently addressing real-world learning in our district, through drive projects, enterprise and design, what Mr. Lewis talked about tonight, how we have rethought alternative education, and provided that as a starting place as opposed to a finish line. The internships, and I know there's several times during pass board meetings you have learned about problem-based inquiries that our K through five students are doing. On the backside, she articulated ways about we're looking at real-world learning in the future. The Futures House, the house for our students with special needs that we'll be putting together and building and opening up in August of twenty-five. More PBL, CBL opportunities, competency-based learning, especially as we think about the middle school experience, moving forward with that. As well as our expansion of career ed, you know, we talked about the Heavy Equipment Operators Program tonight, also HVAC on, on the plan for next year as well, as well as health science partnerships in the future. So, a lot of things happening, this is a great way to encapsulate a lot of the great things we're doing with real-world learning, I wanted the board to have, have this as well. Lastly, you have my updates, they are posted on board docs, so it is a public document as well. There will be a couple of items added this week for invitations to events, year-end events, once you be aware of, but look for those tomorrow, let me know if you have any questions, thank you.
You know, your numbers made me think when we first started our first program with the machining, we had what? Two, one student? You know, and here we are talking about some new one that they'd never even heard of, probably, and we've got ten. So, that just goes to show that our students are appreciating the way that our, our programming is going. So, that's a, a great, kudos to the team for coming up with these opportunities, and, and for the public reaching out to us now, knowing that we are open to these things and helping our kids, so. Any other Board of Education comments?
I do just want to, we, we saw the Through the Eyes video, I love them. You're getting out there, you're trap-shooting, you're, you're just being very vulnerable with the students. So, smiley-clappy guy comes out, and I love it, and I, all of our district parents can look at that and see, in addition to the in addition to the staff spotlight and the things that we're doing to bring tidbits up. So hold everybody. Thank you.
Well, to that, tomorrow, in the message that's going to go to our community, we've articulated the many ways that Jake Wingo and Michelle Stidham have engaged our community through video and through audio, through our podcasts. And when they gave me the list, I thought that was a two-year list. It was actually the list of the last six months of things that they have put together. So tremendous work by Jake Wingo and Michelle Stidham to get us out there and to really tell the story of, of the tremendous things happening in the district. Because I'm convinced 99% of the things happening in this district are good things, and we need to talk about those things.
Oh, and a great night for senior drive night at the high school project drive. That was good. All right. Onto calendar of events. May 6th through the 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week. Check your emails from Pam on that. May 17th is graduation, 7:00 PM. May 23rd is our next regular board meeting, 6:00 PM closed, 7:00 PM open. And there is nothing else, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.